Welcome to Girl in the Gov, the podcast, breaking down politics as we know it and removing all the bullshit.
Because politics needed a rebrand.
Alrighty, welcome back to Girl in the Gov, the podcast, guest interview edition, but we did our top stories yesterday and it's just an absolute travesty because just hours after we recorded our top stories, the FBI raided Donald Trump's home and the fact that we didn't get to talk about that is really upsetting, but obviously here we are today addressing it immediately because wow.
I was gonna say, agreed, because pure tragedy from a top stories standpoint, but don't worry, we got you. And here's the thing, there is a lot to unpack here. Like this is like, you went away for multiple weeks, a wild European escapade. And you had like literally two racks of suitcases piled up and like now you have to unpack. Like that's how I feel about this so much.
I was like, I don't know where this is going. No, but you're right. So much to unpack. I mean, I also want to say one thing that's really gonna maybe put me six feet under and just make me lose my mind is that there's a chance the FBI comes out with a statement like today, which will probably fucking happen like hours after we record this and then whatever. But anyways, there's just so much to unpack from this story. To give the context, let's just get to the, to the deets because FBI raided Donald Trump's South Florida residence at Mar-a-Lago and really has the FBI in the middle of a political firestorm as Punch Bowl says, which is, that's the one, that's one thing I want to unpack is all of the tweets from the GOP. Like Marjorie Taylor Greene saying, defund the FBI, like the, I can't.
I literally can't. Sorry. Ice cream is being attempted to be like, that was not English. I have a visitor that wants to deliver me ice cream, but I just shoe shooed that away because we've got news to cover.
We've got news to cover. The ice cream needs to sit in the freezer.
For the people, for, for the people. I mean, direct eye contact with the ice cream, but it'll be a later date for me and that regardless, I would like to particularly just point people to the fact that the head of the FBI was appointed by Trump's administration. And they're like, oh yeah, defund the FBI. This is all a scam, blah, 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 blah. Like my dude, my dude.
Candace Owens is like, we need a full investigation into the FBI. This is, this is not okay. Which I'm just like curious, I want to dive a little deeper into their arguments and I have some questions for them of like, besides just your absolute obsession and loyalty to Donald Trump, like why, like why isn't this what they do? They, you know, investigate things that they need to investigate?
Federal Bureau of Investigations.
Like I think they're just doing their job and I don't know. I, I don't know. That's just me, but.
It's bananas. Also, I need to talk about like some details here of some things that like really, I should let you finish explaining what happened, shouldn't I? Before I like go off on a tangent.
Well, yeah, sure. Let's do, I mean, again, I'm also all over the place because there's so much I want to talk about as well. So again, right now, there is very little known about this raid, what they're, what they were even looking for and what they even found. And so multiple media reports said it was part of a federal probe into Trump's continued possession of classified records after leaving the White House, which leads me to a really interesting point. And one that we talked about yesterday with our brand ambassadors, which was the story from Maggie Haberman. She was staff in the White House and periodically discovered wads of printed paper clogging the toilet that was believed that the president, AKA Trump, was flushing pieces of paper down the toilet, ultimately clogging it, but with literal like potentially classified information on it. And the fact that we just talked about this yesterday with our brand ambassadors and this is like a little piece of this story of like what they could potentially be, you know, looking for.
You know what that just made me think of is, and granted, I don't know how the bathrooms are set up in the White House, but I feel like the better place to dispose.
They can't have the best sewage. It's an old building.
That is a great point, but where I was gonna say.
What is the sewage system of the White House? I need to know.
Someone, someone contact us immediately. You must know all of the details, like plumbers hit us up, like we need to know. But, 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 but it would be so much smarter to hide these ripped up pieces in the like tampon disposal boxes. No one is going through that. No, no one. Like you want to get rid of some classified information? Like, but like, okay, but like someone could like.
Or maybe burn them, like paper shredder. I'm sure there's one of those in the White House, you know?
But I'm trying to think like, okay, like think from a criminal standpoint.
Here in the bathroom, you're trying to find somewhere to put classified information where you put a tampon box is very smart. You're right. That would be genius. And you know what? That just leads me to think is that just probably men in general, but especially Donald Trump, A, doesn't know that like paper can clog the toilet, but especially like men, like men probably don't realize, you know, that there are items that you can't put in the toilet. And as us as women, we are very aware of that because it's plastered all over our bathrooms. Don't flush feminine products down the toilet. But men probably don't get that message. And then on top of it, Trump being Trump, like he's just probably so unaware, unaware of how any type of sewage system could work and thought, hey, this is a great idea. And.
It's beyond, it's beyond me of like how dumb. And also like looking at the pictures, terrible ripping job, terrible ripping job. I really, it's the little things in that.
Yeah.
What?
We will be linking.
Just world's dumbest criminals sometimes, like.
The world's dumbest criminal. He has to be, he has to be up there. But go to the link in the episode description if you want to see the pictures of the paper in the toilet, because there are indeed pictures of said paper in said toilets that were said clogged by said president Trump.
I gotta say, give credit to like seeing it and being like, oh, I'm gonna take a pic of this. Like let's, let's have some receipts. Okay. Here's another thing though, that I, I'm like not sure on. Like I know I'm not a grammar queen, but I'm just really curious. So Trump put out a statement about this whole thing, AKA being like, my safe, wah, 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 wah. And in it, he like makes the, you know, obviously classically like just fucked up comments, but he makes reference to things happening in third world countries. And then also something about the midterm elections. And this is what's odd to me. Well, I mean, that's odd, but like on, on the grammar end, he capitalizes countries, like the term countries and third world, like as if it's like a name for something. Which you would capitalize. And then same with like midterm elections, which like isn't as far as I know, in that context shouldn't be capitalized. But then there's like other sentences where like his grammar was like, I felt smart. Like he had actually like commas in like places that most people wouldn't think. Yeah.
Or on the papers.
Basically, I was auditing his statement.
We should read the statement, but the thing is like, there's no way he wrote this because even just thinking, looking at, he doesn't fucking write official press releases, but should we read it?
Let's read it. Let's fucking read it.
So, "Statement by Donald J. Trump, 45th President of the United States of America. These are dark times for our nation as my beautiful home, Mar-a-Lago in Palm Beach, Florida, is currently under siege, raided and occupied."
Be the tackiest home I have ever seen on film.
I actually have not seen pictures. I need to. "And occupied by a large group of FBI agents. Nothing like this has ever happened to a president of the United States before. We are no longer president." "After working and cooperating with the relevant government agencies, this unannounced raid on my home was not necessary or appropriate. It is a prosecutorial," that's how you also know Donald Trump did not write this. He's not using that word ever. "misconduct, the weaponization of the justice system in an attack by the radical left Democrats who desperately don't want me to run for president in 2024, especially on recent polls, and who will likewise do anything to stop Republicans and conservatives in the upcoming midterm elections. Such an assault could only take place in a broken third, in broken third world countries. Sadly, America has now become one of those countries corrupt at a level not seen before. They even broke into my safe!" Exclamation point. What is the difference between this and Watergate? What? "What operatives broke into the Democrat National Committee?" Here in reverse, Democrats broke into the home of the 45th President of the United States. I don't know if that makes any sense to me personally. "The, the political persecution of President Donald J. Trump has been going on for years. Is this now switching from first person to third? I'm confused." "Has been going on for years with the now fully debunked Russia, Russia, Russia scam, impeach hoax number one, impeach hoax number two, and so much more. It just never ends. It is political targeting at the highest level." "Hillary Clinton was allowed to delete and acid watch, acid wash 33,000 emails after they were subpoenaed by Congress. Absolutely nothing has happened to her to hold her accountable. She even took antique furniture and other items from the White House." I also have a comment on Hillary in a second. "I stood up to America's bureaucratic corruption. I restored power to the people and truly delivered for our country like we have never seen before. The establishment hated it. Now, as they watch my endorsed candidates win victories and see my dominance in all polls, they are trying to stop me and the Republican Party once more. The lawlessness, political persecution, and witch hunt must be exposed and stopped. I will continue to fight for the great American people." There it is.
I got very distracted because I ended up on the tweetosphere, AKA Twitter, looking at the response of his little, little army of humans. And I'm, I'm just dead. I'm just dead at some of these people.
Speaking of Hillary though, did you see her Instagram where she was plugging her merch?
So good, so good. I will say, like she really has aced it, whether it's her or her team, but just these like perfect snarky moments where, because there have been some other times where that's popped up and she's just killed it with that. So it's like, whether you like her or not, A+, A+ like.
But it's funny because like Trump would do the same thing, like immediately plug the merch. But yeah, other thing to note is that like with this, of course, is a huge fundraising ask that Donald Trump and his team has done as well. So, hey, marketing geniuses on their end too. They might as well capitalize on, on the bad press, but we will see what happens here. This is going to be interesting. I'm, you know, we were waiting here desperately for an FBI statement that will likely obviously come right when we stop recording this, most likely just due to our luck. But we will immediately respond on our social media.
True. Slash, speaking of social media, go check out your favorite human ever, AKA me's, AKA not really, but just like feeling like a self-plug TikToks, because we did.
No, I really liked your last one, the Papa one.
I literally, oh my God, I, that one was most genius. I, not to credit myself, but to credit myself, I was going through like our saved sounds, just trying to think, I was like, okay, like, I'm trying to just get some inspo, like what, what could really fit? And not even, I wasn't even looking for that specific story, you know? And then I replayed that sound and I was like, wait a freaking second. This is iconic.
So go check it out. We're not going to give any more context because you have to go watch it. But yes, that is FBI raid. Excited to see what comes from it. If you guys also have any stories you would like to see talked about, send them through our DMs. We're happy to consider anything to chat about on our, our little intros. Yeah.
And wait, I have an addition to that too. And we were telling our brand ambassadors this yesterday as well, is since we now do the top stories edition and that comes out on Tuesdays, if there's news that happens over the weekend and you're like, wait, what is this? Or you feel like something's going to get lost in the sauce because a lot of times that happens with something's released on the weekend. Yeah, totally. Send it to us or if you have questions on that story, again, send it to either our DMs or info@girlongev.com. We're happy to consider answering any questions on those. Look for the answers if we don't know them. You know the drill, all of that, but just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that with that coming on Tuesdays, that we definitely try and cover some of the stuff that happens over the weekend because it's a little bit like earlier, early bird special or whatever.
And even like the week before, sometimes too, there's big, big stories that drop like late in the week, even if it's post Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then obviously through the weekend. And there's, you know, and we end up not covering it just because it's technically old news at that point. It's still important to run through it and answer any questions you guys have. So let us know if there is anything like that. But speaking of top stories, little run through of what we talked about yesterday, so you can go listen. We talked about the Inflation Reduction Act. We explained everything that happened last week with all of that and all of the Senate and House legislative, their legislative summer and how it was like low key a successful summer for Democrats. We also talked about how we are a little bit worried that they won't market it correctly and get the votes they need in November. So go listen to that. That's the big story. And we also talked about how Ron DeSantis in Florida is suspended, or suspended a elected attorney for not prosecuting abortion related charges. The White House is doing to push the Senate to pass the assault weapons ban, Biden going to Kentucky for the flooding, Alex Jones verdict, and the US sending more money to Ukraine. So go listen to our top stories to hear all about all of that. And then we also have a little exciting thing that just came out. That's just dropping.
We do, we do, we do. Okay. So basically thanks to a little place called Etsy, we now have an Etsy shop. And what you're going to be able to find on that shop is digital downloads of all of our fun phrases. So sometimes we put them on merch, which is great. Sometimes we, you know, have really specific drop dates for our March around events or collaborations and whatnot, but we want to make sure that you guys like have access to, you know, these phrases and fun ways and colors and all of that before that happens or even during when that happens or any, I don't know, any day, any month, any year, you can get yourself a digital download of one of these fun phrases. So like whether it's when in doubt, vote them out, or it's a vote for me dog, or any of our other phrases. A liberal cowgirl is making a debut in this. You can get yourself a digital download. You can buy it right on Etsy and then you're sent that PDF and you can download it. You can make either, you know, a print, a poster, you can put it on canvas, whatever it is. I ordered sticker, true, true, true. I ordered, what you gonna call it, a poster, which I just got today. Very exciting. And the largest I recommend BT dubs is 18 by 24. That's what I got for the poster and that is pretty big. Like it is bigger than I realized because we know I'm not a math gal. Anyways, you probably make it bigger, but that's really where I like.
Prints are cute too. You can like put them on your desk, put them in a little frame, hang them up in your bathroom, whatever is, is speaking to you though.
Make a gallery wall out of like all of these. That's kind of what I want to do. Oh, we shall see. But anyways, you can buy them all via Etsy. They are live. We will obviously put the link to that shop in our descriptionae and links in our social media and.
All the things.
I don't know. I don't know. Anywhere and everywhere, but buy them for yourself, buy them for a friend. Oh, that could be a cute little birthday gift for someone.
Gift. And especially you guys, it's an election year. When in doubt, vote them out. Perfect, perfect, perfect. But yes, go check that out. Linked in the episode description. And we're going to get into our guests because holy shit, we love this interview. We love this guest. We love this topic. We spill so much fucking tea. And we are just really excited for you guys to listen to this. So why don't you give us a little spiel? Give us a little without further ado moment.
Oh, absolutely. Okay. So today's interview is with Ken Russell. He is the Miami City Commissioner and he is running for Congress. Originally he was running for Senate in Florida and he switched over to Congress. So we get into why he made that move, what his campaign is all about, what he's up against, basically the whole kit and caboodle in terms of Florida politics, meeting national politics, what that means and need I not forget?
Social media of it all.
The social media of it all. If you don't know Ken Russell from TikTok, I don't know what to tell you besides immediate follow. He is a social media genius and manages to really like meld together campaign, politics and social media in a way that is so approachable and so in line with what voters are craving and wanting. And that's transparency and authenticity. So.
But.
Go check it out.
Establishment, Dems are giving it to them, but that's the tea. That's the tea. We'll get into it.
I was gonna say, don't, don't get, give away the whole interview before we get into it. Madison blow. Okay. So anyways, without further ado, here's Ken.
Well, this episode has been a long time coming because we have been naturally watching you on TikTok and keeping us entertained, keeping us informed. And of course, making us look at a very particular race in Florida, which you are of course a part of. You're running for Congress in District 27 in Florida. Can you tell us about this race? Can you tell us about this district? What's the story here?
First of all, thank you for what you guys do. I mean, it's a little bit of what I do as well, trying to bring political discourse to media that doesn't normally engage in, in, in that traditional way. So non-traditional ways of talking about important things, it's not easy to capture attention. So I think, I think we're doing it. Yay, we're doing it.
You are doing it so good too. Well, I'm sure we'll get into this.
So first of all, thanks, thanks for everything you guys do. So yeah, I'm in a congressional race and in Florida, there's 28 congressional districts. And you can only vote for people within your congressional district and mine happens to be from Miami down to an area called Cutler Bay. It's a little over 800,000 people. It's right on the coastline of Florida, so it's really subject to storm surge, sea level rise, water quality issues, environmental issues, and it's bordered on the west by the Everglades, uh, where we have also a lot of environmental issues that affect everything, including our economy and our drinking water. So it's an amazing district, which is dealing with a lot of the issues that we have at a national level.
Well, that also leads us to another question about just like Florida in general. And you know, how does your district play into kind of like the bigger political discourse around like what, you know, people in Florida really need issue wise too?
Florida usually gets it wrong when it comes to presidential races. We're usually the ones that mess things up in some way or another with hanging chats or vote counts or you name it. And it's, it's a very unique state. I'm trying to reclaim the Florida man name in a positive way. We'll see if that happens or not, but people mistakenly think that this is a foregone conclusion of a red state and it's not. We have red leadership here because they're much smarter at organizing, legislating, having the courts in line and, and getting their way from a political perspective. But when we put issues on the ballot, progressive issues on the ballot, they passed overwhelmingly. Voters have approved $15 an hour minimum wage statewide, medical marijuana, former felon's voting rights. Yet even in those very same elections, the progressive candidates tend to lose. And a lot of that is we're losing the messaging and, and the messaging game. And that's a little bit of what I'm trying to get back. You, you maybe have seen in a lot of my comments that there's a lot of people of all stripes of colors politically who are supporting me. And I, I wear that like a badge of honor. I'm very unashamed of my progressive values, but somehow still I'm attracting people from the center, from the right, and, and that's what we need more of. This particular district is considered one of the only potential flip districts in the entire country, red to blue. Democrats are going to be clawing to hold on to seats this midterm. But this is actually one that we could win back. It was held by Donna Shalala two years ago. Donna had it for one term. Mariel Vira Salazar, the incumbent, has had it now for one term. So just two-year freshman incumbent, zero accomplishment, um, really worried much more about foreign dictators and international issues than what's going on at home. And she's getting primary from the right by Steve Bannon and the gang calling her a socialist. And trust me, she is so Trumpy. I mean, they're, they're really making, you know, socialists are going to be really upset that they're just diluting the name of socialism because they're calling everybody a socialist. But, but so she's vulnerable was my point. And so I'm really excited about this race.
Totally. And with this race in mind, what inspired you to get involved here? I know, you know, previously you were running for Senate, then made a, you know, switch over to this. What was sort of the, the strategy in mind with that? And you know, again, why now? You know, I feel like that's always a question.
It was all master planned, just like.
You wanted the press.
I knew it.
I, I've been a city commissioner for the last eight years here in Miami. Before that I was a surfboard salesman. I don't have a long political resume, but I realized as a city commissioner, the things that were missing, the things I was accomplishing, but, but could have gone further were the, the federal missing piece of the puzzle. The layers weren't working together on big issues. Uh, storm surge and infrastructure, affordable housing, water quality. These are all things that need a federal partner, a champion. And so I decided, once I was done here, I would become that champion for 412 cities in Florida by being a senator, which is currently Marco Rubio, who's up for reelection right now. So I got into that race a little over a year ago and that's where I started getting my first TikTok traction. Apparently he's not very popular on this platform. He's tried to ban it and, he's a pretty easy target of, you know, and so we had a lot of fun with very snarky posts about me versus Marco Rubio. But what happened?
The algorithm likes anti Marco Rubio content. That's good to know. Sam?
I recommend it. Highly recommend it. It's an easy layout. Yeah. But then Val Demings jumped into this race. I realized she's a very powerful Democrat. Three million bucks a month she was pulling in. When I realized I couldn't beat Val Demings and I wasn't going to start attacking her in order to do so, even though we had some opposing positions on, you know, policing issues, marijuana issues. I decided to drop out, endorse her, support her, and find a race that I can win. And it happens to be this one where I was born.
That's so smart. Really. I think more people need to do that honestly, especially in the primaries. There's a lot of strategy there and it's like important sometimes to be like, okay, where, it's similar kind of theme to, we talk about this a lot, just how like fundraising and how people just like pour money where they like, you know, want to see, you know, Mitch McConnell lose, but it's like, how can we be strategic as Democrats to make sure we're winning as much as we can in these like really important seats? But who are you running against? Let's talk about this race a little bit more and what's on the line in, in your district here.
Right. So when I got into this, this, this primary, it was pretty smooth sailing to the general. And then there's a candidate who was running for governor. Uh, she was in a distant third in governor against Charlie Crist and Nikki Fried for the Democratic nomination here in, in, in the primary here for governor. She dropped out of that and dropped into this race where I was. And this has been a real issue for us as Democrats across the state and across the country. I was actually courted into this congressional seat by the DCCC and out of Washington. And before I made the move, dropping out of Senate race, I needed to know that I'd have their support, that I was there. They said, listen, you're our candidate. We started sharing budgets. We started working together. And then once the deal was cut for Senator today of the dropout of that governor's race and drop into this race, wow, they dropped me like a bad habit.
Did they?
Absolutely. Cut me off. Dear, dear John email. Um, we're, we're going 100. I said, listen, we're early days in this primary. She hasn't been qualified yet.
Oh my God.
Watch it shake out. Don't put a thumb on the scale just yet. You've got two viable Democrats who are elected officials currently, who are raising money currently, who have good fan bases of a different nature currently. Let's let this play out a little bit. Nope. They dropped me hard. They went all in with her. Nancy Pelosi endorsed her. Debbie Wasserman Schultz endorsed her. And suddenly I'm back to being a scrappy underdog. That's kind of my brand anyway. So I'll, I'll be all right.
We, we love a true to brand moment, but like that, I feel like really highlights again, the messaging issue that Democrats have.
The messaging issue. We literally, this is so crazy.
And the organization.
And how they don't even prioritize like the way you've just absolutely killed on social media. And we're going to talk about this a little bit later of just how important it is for, you know, candidates and just, you know, politicians to step into these social spaces where young people are and where these different groups of people are and reach them, which you're doing so amazingly. And like, and the DNC and the DCC, like they're just so bad at that. They don't prioritize that. And it's just like interesting to see this play out in your race. And like this is a pure example of that, I feel like.
Well, they're, they're certainly underestimating the, the power of the social media right now. TikTok is so new in the political sphere and they're saying, oh, well, TikTokers don't vote. These are kids. And, and they're missing it. They're really missing it. Something special is happening here.
Absolutely. Oh my God. I have so many thoughts. And again, we're going to dive into this topic a little bit later. So we won't go too like crazy at the moment. But let's talk a little bit about Miami City Commissioner and that role because we haven't talked to a city commissioner before. And so we want to learn more about this role does. Can you kind of tell us like, how you first like got into this role, but also, you know, what it really is and what it does?
Yeah. So about a little over eight years ago, there was a contaminated park in front of my house. I didn't know what to do. I was a professional kite surfing instructor and surfboard salesman. I had a wholesale business. So I mostly stand up paddle boards around the country and Central, South America. I was growing my business, got my three little kids, two dogs, some cats. My wife's a veterinarian. Boom, contaminated park. Who's my commissioner? What's going on? How do we fix this? And nobody was giving answers. They just fenced it off. We couldn't go. I decided to start asking questions and when I got the answers, they were horrible. Like what caused it was city dumping over 50 years, toxic chemicals, contaminated ash. And their plan to remediate it was horrible as well. The way they were going to pay for it was fraudulent as well. So this was my first introduction to Miami politics. I organized the neighborhood. We marched on City Hall, T-shirts, signs, the whole deal. We got them to change it, fix it, clean the park correctly. There were five other contaminated parks. And what I learned, what really drove me into running was where the ash came from. It was from the incinerators, the garbage incinerators. They used to burn the whole city's garbage in the poor neighborhoods. And that ash would sort of rain down on those communities and cause cancer clusters, et cetera. But where they would cart the ash to were the empty spaces. So the karma they created for themselves was polluting all of their, their parks around the city. And so there was a social justice issue, an environmental justice issue. And as I delve deeper, it was a housing issue. These, these areas that where they had the incinerators are now the highest target for gentrification and displacement. I'm like, I don't know much about this stuff, but there is a mission here that nobody's, nobody's on. And, and I, I feel like I'm in the right place, the right time. I ran for office, boom, city commission. So it's a nonpartisan seat, even though everybody has a party, you run nonpartisan. You're not allowed to say what your party is in your advertising, et cetera, including our mayor. But, and it's actually a really good thing, even though we all know what each other is, it never comes up and we don't wear it on our sleeve. And I've, I've passed dozens and dozens of ordinances in the city of Miami to change Miami for the better from, from government transparency and finance issues, police oversight, environmental development control, affordable housing. And I've done it in the minority. The Miami's gerrymandered to always have three older Cuban conservative commissioners, one black commissioner and one white commissioner. I'm the Japanese American commissioner, but I play the white commissioner. And, and so I'm in the minority, but I've done all this done. And that's a really good trading ground for state and federal politics. It should almost be mandatory.
I love that. That also just is like super interesting that it's a nonpartisan position. Is there like any backstory to that or like any reason? I am curious to like, given what you said about Florida politics and, you know, Floridians also voting for like $15 minimum wage and some of these other things. But like, once it gets attached to, you know, a particular party, it doesn't actually happen. You know, I'm curious if we like did that at a larger scale, if. You know, I'm curious if we like did that at a larger scale, if that would actually be really successful and sort of change the status quo.
Florida is like the upside down. I I don't know if if other states are the same way, but most of our municipalities are nonpartisan. But even our partisan politics are weird here in Florida. My competitor, Annette Tadeo, has been in the state senate for the last couple of years. And she voted against the gun reform bill that the Republicans brought across the line after Parkland. This is the the state bill that they're now touting across the country as the example of a bipartisan bill that should be, you know, passed. And it was it was part of the precursor, the one that just passed federally now. She voted against that, but the 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 fun fact is that most Democrats did as well. And it was this weird political calculation to hold to their positions against the Republicans, but still let it pass. And I was there with the Parkland parents as a as a city elected in Tallahassee advocating for the bill because the parents wanted it. And the Democrats said, well, it's not perfect. It's not everything we want. We want a this or that in it or not in it. I'm like, you've got the Republicans actually moving against the NRA right now. Take this way. They didn't take it. Same thing on water quality. The the sugar industry completely rots the core of both parties in this state. They both take the money at the state level. And then they vote on behalf of the industry versus environment and versus drinking water, but nobody attacks each other because they're all taking it. And and so even there, my competitor voted in favor of the sugar industry over clean air and and clean water more than once. And nobody's ever called them out on it. So it's it's a weird state when it comes to parties. We can't quite seem to get it right.
Yeah. A thousand percent. And I have so many questions, especially about the sugar industry. Like what, just as someone that's like not from the state, like what exactly is the sugar industry? What's the dynamic there? Like, is this? I mean, if there's free gummy bears coming through for this, I'm here for it. But like, is this like how oil is in Texas? You know, what's the 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 behind the scenes on it?
Right, right. So one TikToker commented on one of my posts. He said, big sugar. It sounds like a New Orleans mob boss or some Dick Tracy character.
No, big sugar. That's actually hilarious.
Yeah. So every state has a big something, right? It's one industry that seems to control the politics and work against the interests of either the environment or the people. And in our case, you know, you've got your coastlines of Florida. They're mostly around tourism, water and real estate. And in the center of the state, you've got agriculture, you've got very fertile land around Lake Okeechobee. And that has been run by the sugar industry for decades and decades and decades. What's really messed up our water is a very old story about how the state is plumbed. And and Lake Okeechobee is that water supply for that whole agricultural industry, which is fine. But little by little, they started diverting the water so it wouldn't go where it was supposed to. The Everglades started drying up. And the Army Corps put in the worst plan decades ago to send canals out to our estuaries on the east and west coast of Florida from this lake water. But because the state is, the state legislature is completely compromised by agriculture, there's no oversight on the quality of chemical that go into the water, the fertilizers, the glyphosate, the. Everything that's used in the agriculture industries. The water's getting very contaminated and nobody's controlling where that water flows and goes. And so every year they dump that water out, those canals into the estuaries on the east and west, and you see the manatee deaths. Seventeen hundred manatees last year died. On the west coast, red tide blows up, fish kills all on the coast, shutting down the tourism industry. And and it's all about nutrients in the water, algae blooms, lack of oxygen and and different bacterias. So there is a plan to fix it all, but sugar's trying to keep that plan from happening. And what they do is they teach everyone how to look environmental. We're all environmental stewards here in in Florida. But when you study their votes and their money, you see where they really land.
Yeah, I mean, there's big, big sugar. It was probably an aggressive beast of an industry. I mean, also the the messaging around that, you know, like big oil, you can be like, let's go clean energy, get some nice like electric vehicles.
Big sugar. Wait, I like sugar.
Yeah, I really like sugar. Like, what are we supposed to do about this? Well, yeah, moving into our I have a stupid question segment to learn a little bit more about city commissioner and what it does. Can you answer that question of like, what does a city commissioner do?
So it's different from city to city. How their charter is written is what decides how the legislators work and the legislation of a city. We were, you know, a state will write laws, cities write ordinances. And these are like the spitting on the sidewalk type of stuff, right? Where there's certain different jurisdictions for laws. Ours mostly deal with how big the buildings are and urban planning within a city. So how much affordable housing there is, where the tall buildings are allowed to be, where the single family homes are allowed to be. So we really vote on the code. Commissioners vote on on the on the budget, on the police budget, on the rules of the city. In our city, we have what's called a weak mayor system. There's cities that have a strong mayor system where the the mayor has a vote. Ours is more of a ceremonial weak mayor system where a city manager runs the city. A commission, there's five of us who are elected, set the laws and the mayor has the power of veto, but that's about it. There it's more of a ceremonial, you know, cheerleading of our brand as a city kind of thing, ambassador for the city, which can be very effective. But there's only five of us. For a city the size of Miami, we are the largest city in the country with only five commissioners. And it's way too much power to put in the hands of a majority, which is three. So if three people are a majority, that's all it takes to change the entire laws of the city of Miami and they can do it in one meeting. It's it's pretty brutal. And so it makes for a really rough politic. Combine that with our proximity to the Caribbean, Central South America. There's a very, I don't know how to put this lightly. There there's, there's a pretty rough and tumble frickin propaganda to our politic. Which you tend to see typically south of here. And it's very effective on a on a on a community that's not really engaged. Our voter turnout on city elections is very low. So there's not much accountability for for us as commissioners and it can it can get pretty rough. We've had some pretty rough meetings.
Yeah, I'm sure. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, five for a city that size and that is like the whole power structure. That is absolutely bananas. I guess you could sort of answer the question in terms of with mayors, how they, you know, work together. It's really sort of a veto situation. But are there other offices that commissioners work with? Do you guys work outside of the city as well with like other, you know, political entities? How does that relationship sort of get built?
So there are groups like League of Cities and they try to, you know, usually they're fighting against preemption from the state level where the state's trying to shut down what cities can can regulate and not. But normally, no, normally a city commissioner stays within their lane. I've decided to go out and beyond that. I joined the Board of the Everglades Trust and started getting involved in water quality issues statewide and started traveling all around the state. Learning what the different corners of of Florida were having problems with water. And there was a lot of common denominators, but there's a lot of unique things. And that became my specialty niche. And coming from the surfboard industry, I was already in in love with that and and I found the solutions. I found the path. And so really it's just politics and money and and logistics to get these solutions in place. And and so, yes, I'm a bit of an anomaly, having stepped out of my city lane and I've been acting in a state or federal role already. But I I've never, I mean, I'm sending guns to Ukraine right now as a city. Like there, I I've never felt like I want to be cubbyholed in these in these roles. I want to be as effective as possible. But yeah, the the mayors, I mean, I've 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 also, I created what's called Municipal Victory Program at the state of Florida Democratic Party. I joined the Board of Trustees and I wanted to do, I wanted to have what I wish I had when I was a candidate. I was running for office. I went to the state party. I'm a Democrat, running for commissioner, you know, very important part of the city. Can you help? They said, no, we don't mess with these nonpartisan races. I said, but I'm Democrat and you should be building your bench. So when I got in, I got into the party, I raised enough, I had, they said, if you raise money, I raised a half a million bucks. I created a municipal program. We've trained hundreds and hundreds of people to run for local office who happen to be Democrats. And I I run Zooms to share ideas on policy with commissioners and mayors across the state on a monthly basis.
That's epic. Also, I love the whole concept of being like, what did I not have when I was in that position? How can I make it better and like continuing to improve things along the way? So I think that's fantastic. Love that approach. Speaking of approaches, we do want to move back to TikTok, obviously.
They've been waiting.
I've made three today.
Okay, you're ahead of us.
Yeah, and you are just like way better than us. And I'm just like, we need to step our game up. This is, we have so much to talk about.
TikTok machine over here. You're also, you've also been named the best local TikToker by the Miami News Times. So let's start with that. First of all, how how does it feel to be the best local TikToker? How did this sort of come about?
And it's not, I I'm not one to brag when I'm about to. It's not best political TikToker. It's like best TikToker. I mean, we got like pitbull and stuff down here. And we got a lot of comedians, we got a lot of artists, we got people much wordier and and more viral. For whatever reason, and I have a feeling it's because of the novelty, that as a politician and having figured out the algorithm of how to connect with folks, there's something unique there. And so it's a, it's a very progressive newspaper called the Miami New Times. It's a real muckraking, go after the bad guys, kind of, you know, dig up the dirt kind of kind of group. So I I wear it as a very big badge of honor from them. And it's it's been a trudge, though. This is not like a flash in the pan. I've been doing this now for over a year. And just building consistently, consistently. And there have been breakthrough moments where I would jump exponentially into higher following. The question is, does it turn around and do they vote? Is it making a difference? My team has hated TikTok since I got on it. My family, they, my family has literally had an intervention. Because it's bad. It's bad. My son took my phone and went in and they looked at the app that shows how much time you spend on each app. And I'm not telling you because it'll be used against me in an attack ad.
That's a fair point.
Oh, my gosh.
It's bad. It's bad. It's not like.
But it's not.
The dark side of TikTok. I'm I'm sorry, I'm gonna hit at it. It has an addictive nature. It's because it feeds you everything you did not know you wanted. And unreal. When you start creating and you, it starts feeding you followers and it gives you also that 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 positive bump. You're getting it from both sides. When you're you're lurking and watching, it's showing you everything you want. And then when you're actually creating and getting good feedback, I mean, this is the high that everybody wants, right?
Oh, my gosh.
So, yeah, it it's time management has been an issue.
Um, I have so many questions. I went for, first of all, like, when did it really start for you? And kind of who's behind it? I like, it sounds like you are a major TikTok stan, which we love. But like, I just want to know more about like, obviously, like you said, like you've been doing this for a while. There's been a few that are like just shot up. But I don't know what's kind of the origin story here. Like, when did you really get on? Like, why? What did you think at first? And like, how has everything changed?
And how did you know that like TikTok was like the platform that was going to be really helpful?
I didn't. I it's what they left me. Like, when you get a campaign team, they take over your social media. And I don't even have my Facebook password anymore. I haven't been on there in six months, but the team is using it, right? And sometimes they're posting as a campaign and sometimes they're posting as me. They do the same on Instagram, the same on Twitter, and that's the classic campaign churn of a social media campaign. And same stuff over and over again. Even my team was guilty. You'll see our emails. There's a lot of that typical campaign stuff, you know, chip in, whatever. And it just left me with TikTok and I tried it out. I was just like, first I started lurking and then it sucked you in and I was just lurking. But I'm like, what if I produce something? I don't remember what my very first TikTok was, but I started trying it out and I was having a little fun with it. Then I started doing it for the campaign, but I started spending too much time and everybody tried to get me off it. And they're saying, listen, this ain't going to go anywhere. Nobody's on here. It's all kids. And and I remember one of the first breakout TikToks I did was where I just looked in the camera and said, can TikTok change an election? And it it blew up over a hundred thousand views, the comments, the responses. People were like, yes, this is where we are. We're here. And it wasn't kids. It was everybody. And they're like, you know, and and they're like, who are you? And I forgot to even say my name in that video. So people were totally calling me like the the Leslie Knope. Like, I completely forgotten to even put my name in and the thing like, what kind of ad is this? You didn't watch your issues. I'm like, it's not an ad. I was just asking a question.
Yeah.
And and it it started growing from there. And that's when I realized it was on the.
Absolutely. And I think there is the whole discussion too about social media versus traditional media. We talk about this all the time about how traditional media can be a good thing to get clips from. It can, you know, obviously be good in terms of reporting. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily cover the whole gamut of issues or candidates. And oftentimes, if, you know, a particular newspaper or news outlet decides to back one particular campaign in a certain sense, they don't cover, you know, the other candidates in a race. And I feel like social media kind of opened some doors and we're just curious like what what is your experience been with social media and what's done for your campaign versus traditional media? Like, what's that sort of contrast been like?
It's definitely been a shift for me on how I receive my news, even personally. I used to love to sit there and watch Rachel Maddow for an hour and I can't now. And and no offense to her, I love, I love her and what she covers and how she covers it. I guess I've lost the attention span for one topic for twenty minutes, for example. And I love that she still finds that that obscure fact within an issue and and opens that up for everybody. But it's 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 a thesis, basically. And you, there is a way to get that same amount of information out very quickly in social to where, you know, it's it's still consumed and the knowledge is passed. And if you want to dig deeper, you can go find the article. If you want to dig deeper, you can go, but but you're left with everything you need and you can move on in thirty seconds. And or fifteen or eight. And and it's it it's maybe not healthy because we've already had attention span issues and as the generations go on.
Yeah.
You know, the next step Webster's dictionary is going to remove the apostrophe from your, you know, the possessive on a official basis. They're just going to say, because social media has normalized bad grammar and instant gratification, it's now correct.
Right, right, right. That would help us, though, I will say. Yeah. I have questions too about kind of, first of all, like the flip side of like Sam's question of like, how has social media? I guess just helped your kind of like press and comms on the other side of like the audiences you're able to reach. Also, I'm curious, like, on your campaign, like, who's on your team and what kind of maybe like people you've hired on to your comms team or your press team? Who have like not traditionally worked with somebody who, you know, is so present on social media and uses it as such a powerful tool? Like, how kind of maybe the people you've worked around have been like, oh, shit, like, this is new, this is working, this is. You know, because it's really just like, I feel like you're one of the first candidates I've ever seen, we've ever seen that like has really harnessed it in a in a powerful way.
I was early, I think, in trying to use social media before it was able to be as effective as I'm hoping it is now. In my first campaign in twenty fifteen, I was really pushing my campaign manager, what's going on with our Twitter? He's like, no, you need to knock doors. He's like, no, you need to raise money. I'm like, but look at the Twitter. And and, you know, I get like, look, that person, I'm I'm getting traction. They're like, no, he's like, no, you need three thousand votes in the next month and you need to get out and do X, Y, Z. And and so when I won, I look back and and he was right. And even when I got into office, I tried bringing social media. I started my own podcast. It was all pretty rigid and I was trying to bring a dynamic marketing personality from my surfboard life into this. I mean, I was a professional yo-yo player before that. So I have these, that's I'm saving it for the general. It hasn't even really hit TikTok. I haven't even told, I haven't even had story time.
Girl, I'm gonna have exclusive.
Yeah, you do have an exclusive. I have.
Okay.
Someone literally asked me like, wait, we checked your Wikipedia. How come you have not dropped the professional yo-yo player info here?
You have to vote for me in the primary and then you'll get to learn about it. Yeah.
It's the teaser. And so I I've got these unique marketing concepts and ideas and I want to be, you know, like, but it wasn't catching. And and this is even my Twitter game sucks. Oh, my gosh, I go to Twitter and they just tear me apart. I've got, I've got like three trolls on Twitter. They're just, you know, they're just trashing all the time over everything. And only now that I'm starting this this week, what happened this week, you know, out of out of LA, a Twitter account took my TikTok virality and brought it over to Twitter. And suddenly it had a new real virality or officially accepted virality in the traditional social media world. Now my Twitter game is starting to step up a little bit because folks there are defending me when I get on against the trolls, where I didn't have that before. But yeah, I've I've tried everything. Really TikTok's the first place I feel comfortable just going on the fly, being me and and communicating and it's working.
Do you have people on your staff or like, I'm also curious too, when you started working with like the DCCC, however many Cs? And like maybe what they thought about this TikTok presence or like the social media priority that you have? Like, are people like, no, no, we need to get you on CNN. Like, no, no, we need to, you know, like, what, how is, has there been any of that?
We we haven't had the national cable level traction that I wish this congressional campaign had. And now that I'm the underdog, certainly not going to get it before the primary. And before I was running against Val Demings, so I was a fly on the wall. So like I said, my team has really tolerated my TikTok and now that it's going great, I'm happy to let them all take credit for it. It's amazing. But I have a very youthful, energetic team that is working their ass off. And they're, you know, dropping press releases for me, they're they're working all the social media, the email campaign, and they're doing an amazing job. And, you know, like I say, whenever I've got a quiet moment, I'm over there building a TikTok. But I I do what they tell me and I go where they tell me and and we're running a great, you know, nuts and bolts, bread and butter campaign as well. Uh, but who knows? As the underdog, it may be TikTok that saves me.
I think it could. I think it could for sure.
Just think too, like, social media, like, there are so many platforms that people, especially in campaigns, don't use. If we had literally a penny for the amount of campaign websites we've been on that don't have an Instagram in twenty twenty two? Or don't even have a literal email on their websites? I mean, we'd be filthy rich. It's kind of crazy. And it seems like the idea is that a lot of these campaigns don't care about also getting new voters. They only care about achieving a certain number within the ones they already know about. Which as young people and as people that are trying to get more and more people involved in politics and show that they can make change and that their voice can be heard. It's super, super frustrating to see. And I'm curious if you've also gotten some, you know, pushback from that type of strategy as well? And like, what what those conversations have looked like for you?
No, of course. The 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 political world in in Florida is run by the the cottage industry of consultants. And it's really the candidates working for the consultants and not the other way around. It's really sad. And that's why you see a lot of cannibalism in districts where Dems. And that's why you see a lot of cannibalism in districts where Dems drop on top of each other. It's really just a consultant trying to make a buck. They don't care what happens to their client. They don't care what happens to the district. They don't care what happens to democracy. And there's traditional paradigm, and this is where I'm hopeful, is is hopefully going to break. Because they don't believe in the power of social. They think it's nice window dressing. But the bread and butter in getting an election won is on their mail campaign, on their absentee ballot fall, on their on their senior center visits, you know, all these things. And so, you know, this is something outside of the box for them. And if they're not expecting me to win because of that, because they see me spending so much time here, they're like, okay, let him go have that, and you watch what happens. And if 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 I lose, a lot of people were counting on me in this 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 world of social media. They're seeing me as as a newer, different type of candidate. They're gonna be very disenchanted. So I can't lean only on the social. I really have to also have the nuts and bolts of a really good campaign, and I'm glad we do.
Yeah.
But it, something's happening special, as I said, right now, even in this very week, in the very week absentee ballots are about to drop. There's something special happening. I can't go to to rest to a dinner now without people recognizing me. And that wasn't happening in my eight years as a city commissioner in my own district. It wasn't happening even a month ago. But now whether, I mean, whether someone's twelve or whether they're forty, I'm getting recognized much more regularly, and it's always about TikTok. Love your TikTok.
Yeah.
And I was at a rave the other night. I got recognized at least a dozen times. And
I love it. You're hitting every demographic.
I also just think it's so freaking key because, like, not for nothing, but like, you know, I I'm not going to like the local parade or, you know, some of the like traditional campaign stops, but like I am scrolling on TikTok for ten hours. You know, it's, you're meeting people where they are, and I think that's so different. And that continues to resonate with people.
Plus, I don't think it's, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, basically, it's like, it also hits people outside your district that can also support.
Totally.
That is different. Like, you know, if I live in New York and I'm not in Florida, obviously, I'm not gonna see, you know, someone on the campaign trail physically there knocking doors. Like, it's not gonna get, you know, maybe I see one picture on IG and it just goes over my head. But like, if I'm on TikTok and then I'm actually getting to know you, and therefore I'm seeing your cult of like personality and being like, oh, my God, like, I totally relate to XYZ thing you're saying. There's so much more likelihood that I from afar am either gonna get involved, or I'm gonna make sure my friends that are in that area are gonna get involved. I mean, like, oh, my God, did you see this TikTok? It's so shareable. It's so much more like digestible.
Yeah. I think it's so cool too, it just like also where you're at, like, in your political career. Like, it's not like you are, you know, this big senator who already has like the million Instagram followers or, you know, who someone who is like supported by a DNC or, you know, these big kind of more establishment politicians, like, you are really working on your first congressional campaign and like have these years as city commissioner, which is another just like slept on role in the government that like not everyone knows about. And the fact that you built this platform, like, with this resume, this like resume that you have is, I think, really just impressive and goes to show like how impactful it can be if you're good at this. And if all, if candidates and just Democrats and politicians and politics, period, prioritize this and realize if you're good at this, how powerful it can be. But they just like, won't connect those dots. It's crazy.
They, I hope that the takeaway is that that a platform like TikTok is really democratizing who can get coverage. I mean, I have not spent one dollar on TikTok, nor could I buy my audience if I wanted to, like you can on Facebook or Twitter. So the fact of that that someone's connecting and that they can have an audience across the country is is priceless, literally priceless for a progressive candidate who's not of the machine. And so it all, it's also a double edged sword. Not everyone should do it. Because the only way you're going to be successful on this platform is if you really are yourself. And when they really see you, that might not be a good thing for a lot of politicians. And and so if you come on and you're a rigid robot, you're not gonna have a following or attraction. If you're not a genuine person and you really are yourself, your colors are gonna show. And that's why a lot of consultants don't let their candidates on platforms like this. I was talking to a a consultant. He literally said, I would never let her on this because she might get up in the morning and then her hair's a mess or whatever, and she may say the wrong thing, and then it's out there forever, and we're dead.
Yeah, that's another interesting point of like, we've also seen the opposite side of it, where we've seen these politicians or candidates like attempt at TikTok and have it be so terrible that you're like, that it's almost like propel it. Like, you're like, no, like, actually, no, don't put the politics on my TikTok feed, please. Like, get this person away. I, there's also that side, but there's also the side of like, something that we're even trying to do here is like connect with more campaigns and teach them how to do it, which like, but most campaigns are not open to that is what we've seen and like aren't prioritizing it. So I think there's just a lot of room for again, in that consultant space, even like bring in more young people to teach campaigns and candidates how to effectively reach young people and use these social media platforms, but.
I remember early on, I was trying to do memes and trying to find what was popular at the moment and then take up political angle on it. And I did one with James Franco. And it, the one where he turns around at the bar and winks at you.
Yeah.
And I got trashed for that. I I had never Googled his history of, you know, misogyny or whatever, dating students or, you know, that sort of thing. And the first people were trying to be polite to me. They're like, maybe not a good look. And I didn't know what they were talking about. And then I realized I could have just sunk my campaign by doing this careless social media without vetting it and not knowing I was latching on to someone who's, you know, got really bad media. And so what I did was, I can't remember whether I left it up or I took it down, but I did another video explaining that what I just learned. Like, here's, here's my journey over the last twenty minutes. Like, here's what I just went through. I had no idea. Um, but but it can be fatal to campaigns because you're doing things without the traditional vetting method. And and but the honesty that I went through with that helped me survive it as well. So.
Yeah, that's what you gotta do. I think that's awesome. I think we need more of that as well.
People just don't give social media building like as much credit. I remember not too long ago, I was making some reel, and I was trying to go through the music choices. And I remember every single artist was problematic for some reason. But that was like a thought I had to have, like, would this music be an issue? Lined up with this particular video? And what is the background of every element that's involved here? And it's like, you know, you have to put like a PR lens on the social media too. And I don't think a lot of consultants know how to do that yet. So something, some food for thought. But nonetheless, back to this campaign and where it's going, where it's headed, all of that stuff. For people that are in it, that are excited to jump in and help, where can they find out more information? Where can they, you know, volunteer, support, all that good stuff?
Everyone can help. The link tree and all of my socia's, a spot to volunteer, a spot to contribute. Of course, don't need to just need to live in the district to do either. We've got digital volunteers. I did actually, I had a volunteer once when I was early on TikTok, and I started to not be able to keep up with the comments. It was a student at FSU, and she says, how do I volunteer? And we brought her on. I trusted her with my password, and she was just all night helping me at least answer the simple questions, right? Like, can I, can I vote for you? How do I register? Whatever. And then she tagged the ones that were someone asking a substantive question that that I needed to address. I don't have that anymore. I I just do as much of it as I can, and I miss what I can't. But people can volunteer. We're we're doing also, you can request a yard sign in my link tree, and we deliver it for free within the district. But my hope is, if I can somehow harness this community of three hundred and seventy thousand followers right now on TikTok um, to help increase that virality outside of TikTok. That that first that thing is happening right now on Twitter for the moment. And if maybe they can help find people who are in my district. Everybody has someone who retired in Florida that they know. And and this is a very populous area. This is Miami and south of Miami. So hopefully, people have friends, relatives, they can turn on to the campaign through their socia's, and and they can join in too. But they can go to Ken for Ken Russell for Florida, or of course, the link tree in any of my socia's.
You should do a TikTok meetup. Have you seen these? Where they're like, people are like, let's meet up. This is a San Francisco thing. Let's meet up for our hot girl walks, meet at this park, and then all these girls come together, and they're like, wanna walk together. It's super cute, like, bring the TikTok community off their phones into the world. Maybe you do that and do like, uh, let's meet at Kiki on the River. And or eleven, you know. I'm just kidding.
They're in like district, okay? So I have to service them as a city commissioner. All right?
Hmm, okay, okay. Well, just, just some things to think about. You know, we can bring some TikTok meetups into to the Miami space. But thank you. Thank you for coming on and chatting with us through all of our crazy, crazy questions and commentary. But we just appreciate your time, and we'll be rooting for you. Let us know what we can do.
You guys are amazing. Thank you so much for what you do. All the success to you.
You too.